Welcome to the Olathe Board of Education February Regular Meeting. Joy, would you like to call the roll?
Mr. Whitcliffe?
Here.
Mr. Boyd?
Here.
Mr. Beveridge?
Here.
Mr. McKeon?
Here.
Ms. Schultz?
Here.
Ms. Felter?
Here.
Mr. Fury?
Here.
All right, would you all join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
All right, we are going to jump right into 2.01 Public Comments, and our first speaker is...
Let me read this.
Oh, I'm sorry, Brian, could you read that?
Absolutely. At each regular meeting, the Board of Education reserves limited time for individuals wishing to address the board. Individuals addressing the board should come to the podium at the front of the room and state your name. Tonight, we request that individual speakers limit their comments to five minutes. The staff person will monitor the time and notify the speaker when the five-minute limit has expired. Please direct your comments to the entire board, and if a response is appropriate, the president will respond or refer to another individual. In an effort to respect privacy, we ask that speakers refrain from discussing personal complaints involving individual staff members or students. Those speaking are advised that public comments are videotaped recorded for broadcast on the district's educational access channel and audio recorded as a matter of public record. Thank you.
And our first speaker is Brett McFall.
Before I get going, I'd just like to make my first point that since all this has been going on, never once do I think that COVID is not a dangerous thing and how bad it's been to our society and everything that's going on, but I just wanted to get that out before I go into my stuff tonight. I was listening to a 16-year-old last, well, a month ago in January, and the question posed to him was, "How has 2020 been?" Or, "What's the last year been like?" And his quote was, he says, "It's been like being grounded for a whole year," he said, "but with my parents." And, you know, I kind of giggled at it, and then I just kind of thought, yeah, it was true. But being with my kids, my six kids, the last 11 months or so has been fantastic, and we've been through some ups and downs, but there's nothing better than when they're in their routine of going to school every single day, being with teachers, and teachers providing things that I cannot provide as a father or that my wife provides as a mother. And I'm standing up here, like, I've been here almost every month, when I stood up here six months ago, and just pledging to put these kids first. And my big thing tonight is, I'd really love for us to set a date or start having discussions of, when are we going five days a week? And what does that look like? Is it something we can do in about two weeks, maybe after President's Day? Is it something that, you know, we can talk tonight and put on the docket that things are heading in the right direction, so let's get them in? Okay? And, you know, society has told us not to meet together. That's what society has told us. But the alternative is isolation, loneliness, and depression that I've seen in so many young kids, whether they're my students, whether they're my basketball players, or friends or families, and through the media. And, once again, I'll go back, I firmly 100% believe in COVID and what it does because it's affected almost everybody in my life. And, but with the spreading of fear that it's every single day through the mainstream media. When I was young, it was, you had this thing called fight or flight. You fought, or you ran away. Now we have fight or flight or fright. And I've talked to people who don't even, won't even leave their homes. And as an educator for 16 years, as a basketball coach, and hopefully a leader and role model to my students and kids, we've been through a lot of ups and downs, and I just want my kids to know that I'm still there for them, and hopefully there's light at the end of the tunnel. As a history teacher, never in the history of the United States have we quarantined healthy people. Ever. Not in the 1919 flu, not in typhoid, not in yellow fever. And, you know, that's just, that's just an interesting thing, and I understand what's going on with it. But I've been told if I coach in a basketball game, and I have a mask on the whole game, and then a player on the opposing team tests positive, that I have to quarantine, even though I stood on the sideline the entire game and was 100 feet away from them. And I'm just hoping to return to normal, and hopefully some of those rules get changed a little bit. And what I'm hoping tonight is, you go seven minutes down the road, you go to St. Thomas Aquinas, they've been in school five days a week since August. Go 20 miles to the west to Mill Valley High School, they're five days a week. My daughter goes frontier two minutes, my two, my daughter's two minutes away, the frontier, and they still only can go half. Mill Valley has 1,309 high schoolers showing up every single day. My daughter goes to a school about 600 or 700. That's my fight, that's my battle, and that's my request to you. We hope that we hope to talk about that tonight, and hopefully set a date to get them back five days a week. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Brandi Weller.
My name, can I go ahead and start?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. My name's Brandi Weller, and I have two kids in the middle school district. I'm also a clinical pharmacist at a pediatric hospital in the city metro area. So this isn't the first time that I've been up here speaking with you all tonight at all, but tonight my discussion's going to be a little bit different than the last time. Last time I spoke about remote learning and kids, and, well, my kids have been in the hybrid remote learning model, and I know it's not working for them, but I won't bore you with all of that. Tonight, I wanted to go a little bit deeper on the topic of hybrid and remote learning. So when I decided to speak about this topic, I really kind of went back to one of the questions that I was asked during my post-graduate residency interviews, and they asked me, "Why did you want to become a pediatric pharmacist instead of an adult pharmacist like most people graduating from pharmacy school?" And the answer was quite easy for me, and that is just advocacy. Advocacy for our children, for those children that their parents, their caregivers, their teachers, those adults in their lives that aren't doing what they're supposed to be doing for them. Today, more than ever, that remains a true passion of mine, and I'm under the assumption that it's probably a true passion in terms where you would be sitting up here on the board for Olathe School Districts. So if that is your position with this board, I would like you to listen to these astounding numbers that were published at the end of 2020, so just a few months ago, in the Child Abuse and Neglect Journal. The article was called "Reporting of Child Maltreatment During the SARS-CoV-2 Pandemic in New York City." So this article found that school closures and public health resources decrease the extent of children's interaction with mandated reporters and other trained professionals. In fact, in the United States, the majority of child maltreatment cases are identified by educators, so our teachers in the classroom. They report about 20% of child maltreatment across the United States. So we also know that virtual platforms don't give our teachers direct observation of children, and therefore, this article found that in New York City from March to May of 2020, they had substantially fewer allegations of child maltreatment. So in March, the cases were down 30% from expected, and then in April, it shot up to over 50%, and then May, about 45% lower. And I know you might be thinking, well, you know, our elementary kids, they are in school, they're seeing their teachers every day, so it's really not that big of a deal. But I would like to point out that in 2019, in the United States alone, child maltreatment reports for 10 to 13 years of age had over 120,000 cases. So that's our middle schoolers. And then in the high school age range from 14 to 17, there were over 90,000 cases. So if you take those cases combined, and then you decrease the reporting that's not happening because our kids aren't in the classroom with their teachers, we're leaving out a ton of kids, we're missing the maltreatment that they're getting, it's not being reported. And that's where the advocacy piece comes in. That's our jobs as teachers, as educators, as healthcare providers, to just stick up for these kids and make sure that they're taken care of. So that leads me kind of into my next topic, and that's vaccinations. We all know, because we're here at Johnson County, that my employer and Johnson County have worked out vaccination clinics for all of our teachers here in Johnson County. I'm going to be there tomorrow at 6:00 AM, before my day even starts, helping with these vaccination efforts. So if we know that the vaccine is here, and our teachers are getting it, we know that remote learning doesn't work, because the CDC and the World Health Organization have put out literature and articles saying that remote learning doesn't work, and that our kids need to be in person. And we now know that the child abuse cases are being way underreported. There's literally just one thing left for us to do, and that's to get our kids back in full-time in person. So tonight, I just ask that you all, as the Board of Education, decide to put our children back in time, or, excuse me, back in person full-time. I ask that you take politics out of this, and that you just take that heart for advocacy for our children and make a decision tonight. Thank you all for your time.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Anna Marie Weller.
Hello, my name's Anna Marie Weller, and I'm a senior at Olathe East High School. As all of you know, I have done a majority of my senior year online and over Zoom calls. I've been taking college classes online, and if I'm going to be honest, I haven't really learned a single thing. It's extremely difficult to grasp the concept of electronegativity and bonding in atoms over a Zoom call. Most adults I know haven't even had to learn online. I really couldn't even tell you what I was supposed to learn during the first semester. I know many of my classmates feel the same way. I've watched all of my classmates turn to robots, robots that don't know how to have any form of social interaction anymore. A big part of this is because my class hasn't been to any football or basketball game. We didn't get a prom last year, and we aren't expecting one this year. Don't get me wrong, I would love to have a prom, and I've been fantasizing about it since I was six years old. You all got to go to prom, whether you actually went or not, and you had the opportunity to. There are also ways that the district could make a prom work this year. This whole year has been hard to cope with, to say the least. We've had to push away our childhood daydreams about how we thought our senior year would go, how all of your senior years have gone, even how the class of 2020's senior year went. They had about eight months of their senior year, and they received boatloads of sympathy and recognition. We haven't even had eight months of our senior year in person, and we haven't been able to do the things that we all hoped we would be able to do, and we haven't seen an ounce of sympathy. Teachers and adults just assume that we are all fine with this. I have been told to just go with the flow because, and it's difficult, because in late July, I was under the impression that my parents could choose if I had a senior year. They chose to let me go to school, but you, as the Board of Education, decided to scrap that. I was under the interpretation that I could have a somewhat normal senior year, but instead, we have spent 12 years in the education system to just get swept under the rug. We seem to be sort of like the middle child in this school system. It feels like you have forgotten about all of us. At this point, we are expecting the bare minimum, graduation. You made it work last year, and you will make it work this year. I'm asking you to move towards the idea of in-person schooling, even if it's just for the last two months of the school year. That would mean that the seniors that you care so much about will get the most important months of their senior year. Thank you for your time, and have a good one.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Brian Connell.
I'm Brian Connell, got two kids in the schools. Probably look familiar. I will keep showing up and standing up as long as the school district is here and my kids are in schools. So I kind of like to take a, let's start everything over. What if today was the first day of the pandemic? And just showed up, just as it is? And what would we be working on? What would we be thinking about? If you watch the news, it's kind of freaky. You've got San Francisco, the city of San Francisco suing their teachers union in the school district. You've got the Democratic mayor of Chicago condemning, fighting, and actually calling out the teacher union. This is not how most of those cities work. You've got former mayor Bloomberg offering $10 billion to get schools back in and calling out Biden to get a will and a backbone and get kids in school. Dr. Fauci says, "Get them in school." CDC says, head of the CDC says, "Get them in school," even if they don't have vaccines. The UN, UNICEF, if we were watching news start... So why are they all saying that? It's about kids, kids in school. Your School Board Association of the United States estimated that as many as 3 million students, or 6% of all public school population, are not taking any classes right now, and it's growing. So I'm going to ask a question, because no one ever asks it, and no one ever says it. What is the true student enrollment for Olathe schools right now? We all know, or most people know, and I know, because I've read the statutes, school funding is predominantly based on enrollment, so rolling two years. So what is this district going to look like in '22, '23 because of what we're not doing now? So I'm going to ask you, please get the kids and teachers in school full-time. Read a couple things. Orlando Weekly, February 4th, 2021, "Nearly 90,000 Students in Florida Public Schools Didn't Show Up This Year." We hope that they're being homeschooled, or in private schools, we just don't know where they are. The largest drop was in kindergarten and first grade. Over and over, "California, San Francisco Chronicle, January 31st, California Public Schools Suffered Record Unenrollment, Five Times Greater Than the Last Five Years Where They Average 20,000 to 30,000 Students Per Year and Dropped." The superintendent in Los Angeles quoted as saying, "We lost 6,000 kindergarteners." And if you aren't thinking about the future, let's really understand. No one's ever said, "Why does Olathe have K through kindergarten, you know, elementary and school?" Well, now I think I finally figured it out, that you all knew that they're the highest at-risk group of kids. It's not about those parents, it's about those kids. Our high school kids are missing. CNN, "Even ever our beloved public schools may lose students forever." In Phoenix, the superintendent says, "We don't even know where 8% of our kids even are." Chicago, down 4%, 14,000 fewer students, largest decrease in early grades. The New York Times, "Vancouver Lost 600 Laid Off Staff." That's why I want to look at you all. If you don't have the funding, you can't have these people that we love and we want, our most talented people. Where are you going to find the money when you have to lose staff? "Pandemic Forcing Schools to Fire Non-Union Employees at a Higher Rate," laid off 200 people in Austin, Texas. Dallas, down 4%, Tucson, down 5%, LA, down 12,000 students, New York City, down 45,000 students. Springfield, Missouri, 6% drop, early grades hit the hardest. Ohio, 42,000 students lost. Massachusetts, 37,000 students lost. Pre-K, down 30%. Pre-K, that's our future. Those are stats and numbers, but they are really faces and children. They are our future. I'm asking you, like I did back in September, fundamentally change everything, step, one step closer...
Five minutes are up.
...to the kids and our future. Thank you.
And I do want to point out that our, I'm not talking to you, I'm addressing everyone, that we publish our attendance data, we know exactly how many students we have, that's public information, I believe it's right over 30,000, is that correct? John, Mr. Allison?
Our audit enrollment, 29,352, we've had a difference of about 798 students from this year to last year.
There's nothing hidden there, it's public information, we have to submit it to the state every year. Next up is Megan Bricks.
My name is Megan Bricks. I want to again thank you for the opportunity to speak, so that we can make sure to have all voices heard, even including the senior who is in Olathe High School who spoke earlier tonight. All of our voices matter. I never knew that this early in my teaching career, I would find myself sending an email like I did today to my staff, looking for more cleaning wipes to use in my music classroom. The joy I experienced today from my colleagues sending supplies immediately down the hall my way completely filled my bucket. Never thought I would ever think would happen in my career, but so thankful that they were there. No matter what is put in front of me as an educator, I know my staff will always have my back, no matter what. I've said at previous meetings that I will always show up and make sure that the educators' voice are heard. As you discuss future learning modalities, many educators, including myself, urge you to stick with our gating criteria that you, as a board, established, and use accurate data to inform your decisions moving forward. The vaccines are coming, slowly and surely, and we are thankful for that, but it doesn't mean the end is here. We have work to do in getting all Olathe educators vaccinated in the future. We, as a district and community, need to continue our efforts to mitigate COVID-19 by washing our hands, wearing a mask, and social distancing, to protect all of our students, all of our families, and all of our staff. Teaching is very different in a pandemic, but we, as educators, have found a way to use our strengths and our students' strengths to push forward. I urge you tonight, please put the safety of everyone in the forefront of your decisions. Together, we are stronger, but only if we are safe. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, and that ends our public comments. So we will move into the Information Presentation portion, 3.01, Read Across America 2021. All right, those speakers come.
I'm Dr. Lori Franklin, and I'm the Library Media Coordinator for Olathe School, and I work with all of our school libraries.
And I'm Leanne Rogers, President of Olathe NEA. Thank you so much for allowing us to speak tonight, to bring to you a presentation about Read Across America in Olathe schools. Hi. There we go. Well, we are excited that it is Read Across America time again. The official day that it's celebrated is March 4th, but it's been around since, or March 2nd, I'm sorry, but it's been around since 1998, brought forward by the National Education Association. And it, right now, it's a year-round program that focuses on motivating children and teens to read about events, partnerships, and resources that are for everyone and about everyone. NEA provides some recommendations for the literature and lots of teaching resources throughout the year, so every month they're updated. And I heard several board members that have celebrated Read Across America with classrooms in the past, so it's not just classroom teachers, but our librarians, we have principals, parents, grandparents, and celebrities that take part in this day as well.
So we have recognized over the years, and so has NEA, that there is, it's a growing need. It's an important need for us to recognize that children need to see diverse literature. And one of the topics that we talk a lot about are windows and mirrors, and we also talk about doors, too, but windows and mirrors are really important, and I'm going to let some video content speak to you about that, to explain a little more. The first clip I'm going to show you, however, is just a student talking about a book, a very brief one.
I like this book because the pictures go along with the story, and there's so many details. This is just a great book, and I think anybody would enjoy it.
Good little book review there.
I like this book because the pictures go along...
Hi, I'm Danielle Broadboks. I'm the librarian at Westview Elementary School, and I want to tell you about a book called Stella Diaz Has Something to Say, written by Angela Dominguez. This book is considered an own-voices story because it is written by a person of color about people of color. So last year, I had the opportunity to read this book aloud with a small group of students that were of all different grades in our school. We started a soft start in the morning where they have breakfast together and just build those connections across the community. However, our students were really quiet first thing in the morning, and they were struggling to build those connections, so I decided we'd try a read aloud. So Stella is a third-grade Mexican-American student who learns that sometimes when people move to the United States from other countries, they're called aliens, and that feels like a perfect description to Stella. She imagines herself as an alien from outer space, and, you know, sometimes she just doesn't feel like she fits in anywhere. She doesn't speak English as well as the students at her school, so she goes to a special class for students who need help with their English. However, she also doesn't speak Spanish as well as the rest of her family, because she's lived in the United States for most of her life. So my students of color here at Westview, we have a really high Latino population, and we have lots of students who have not lived in the United States their whole lives. So they were able to connect to the story because they could obviously connect to Stella's experiences. But what's really cool is my students who can't say that they shared that same background with Stella and those same experiences, were also able to connect with her just because of the things that she was experiencing with friendships and at school. So Angela Dominguez's book simultaneously helped students to see themselves in Stella while also helping them to build connections with each other. And that's exactly what we're looking for when we're trying to build a diverse collection of library books in our school libraries and classroom libraries across the district.
And that was Danielle Broadboks, if you didn't catch that, from Westview. Okay, now the next person we're going to hear about, she'll introduce herself, but it's Amanda McCoy.
Hello, I'm Amanda McCoy, librarian at Walnut Grove. It is essential that we share inclusive titles with our students. These titles serve as mirrors for students who look like the characters represented and who see their cultures represented in the books. In a simple yet powerful way, these books send a message. You are important, you matter, you belong here. They also serve as windows for other students. They see the culture represented and the protagonists in the stories, and they see their humanity. They see that these people deserve all the same rights and privileges that they enjoy. One such book that we have in our library is Black is a Rainbow Color. Before this book was even processed, when it was behind the counter, I had a student point and say, "Mrs. McCoy, I want that book, the girl on the cover looks like me." So we saved it for her, of course. This is a wonderful book. The protagonist in the story originally bemoans the fact that black is not in the rainbow, but then she realizes all the things that black is. Black is joy, black is rhythm, black is singing, black is power, black is a culture, and black is a rainbow color. It's just one of many wonderful inclusive titles we can share with our students.
All right, so that's the elementary perspective, and actually, some of the books that are being talked about in this presentation are in front of you, you may have recognized them if you're looking at those. Next up is the middle school perspective, and they take a different take on this and the way that they choose to share diverse books with students.
Good evening. I'm Anne Matier, Library Media Specialist at California Trail, and I'd like to take a few moments to tell you about the Trail Challenge that happens at all Olathe middle schools. The purpose of Trail Challenge is, most basically, to encourage a love of reading with our students. We also want to expose them to a breadth of diversity in terms of culture and life experiences. Books are a way for students to see themselves in a mirror, what are the experiences that they're going through, windows into worlds where it's full of fantasy and fun, maybe they won't actually get to go there, but they can take a peek into other alternate realms, and for doors that will lead them into different experiences on their own life's journey. How do we select the books? Well, this year, our list of 16 is right here, and there'll be a link at the end of this video if you'd like to go look at these in a little bit more detail or depth. But the 10 Library Media But the 10 Library Media Specialists read throughout the year, and we keep an ongoing list of the books that we are most enthralled with. The books need to be less than two years old. We read book reviews. We look at award lists. And of course, we get great recommendations from our staff and our students. We debate these books and come up with a list of 16 that we will promote late spring, summer, and roll out in the fall as well. Recently, we posted all of these books on Twitter and heard back from quite a few authors. Very excited that their books are being read and enjoyed here in Olathe. Some of the outcomes from Trail Challenge are our circulation numbers go way up. We've cultivated a relationship with the Olathe Public Library and Johnson County Public Library in terms of them promoting our list and adding these books in greater volume to their circulation as well. Trail Challenge is also a relationship builder for library media specialists and students, as well as students to students who come together and talk about books, either maybe during their lunchtime with a chat and chew, or we have parties. Maybe not this year. We didn't have any pizza parties or popcorn parties, but in years past and in the years to come, we will host events where students can get together and talk about literature. We've also seen some kids really expand some of their understanding and experiences with literature. So that's very exciting for them to go, "I had no idea who Bonhoeffer was and the role he played in World War II with Hitler." And so that's exciting to see them delve into history and different aspects of literature. In March, we have a voting, March Madness-style brackets, and all Olathe students in middle school come together and have the opportunity to vote for their very favorite book. It's very exciting and very impactful, powerful for these kids to interact with literature and to read a great selection of novels. Next, we'll hear from Catherine Leo as she booktalks one of this year's titles.
This book is called A Crossover, and it is written as a fiction book, and it's also written as a graphic novel. And the graphic novel version is on our Trail Challenge list this year for the middle school libraries. And the book is written in a verse, free, kind of free-form verse, rap-like. And this is the story of two twins, Josh and Jordan Bell. They're 12 years old, and they are fantastic basketball players. Their dad played. They have grown up with the sport and the love of the sport, and they are very tight-knit and belong into a very tight-knit family. Their goal, they think they're going to be winning or hoping to win the city championship in basketball. And with these two at the helm, they're pretty confident that it will happen. Unfortunately, a couple of things happened that caused some conflict between the two boys. One is a girl comes between them. And then, two, their dad gets very sick, and it leads to a crisis in the family. And so basketball is the main part of this story, and many of the poems are fueled with that kind of game action. But also, an important part of this is the love of a family. And also, when you have plans in life, sometimes things get derailed in how to move on and go with Plan B and try to survive these conflicts that you have in life. With the pictures in the graphic novel adding to the free verse, it is an amazing, fun book, and it has been very popular with our students at our schools.
That librarian that just talked, I'll let her finish. She reads a book a day. A book a day. It just amazes me in order to be able to make recommendations to students.
Good evening. I'm Anne.
And finally, I'm going to give you the high school perspective. We're almost done here. And this is Amy Brown.
Hello, my name is Amy Brown. I'm the librarian at Olathe South High School. I have two primary goals for promoting diversity at South's library. The first is to guarantee that every student can see themselves reflected in a book. These mirror books are not only validating, but can mitigate feelings of loneliness and isolation for students. My second goal is to show students that there is a world outside of their community that has interesting people, places, ideas, and customs, and that these window books can provide the opportunity for greater understanding and empathy. And the Neighborhood of True by Susan Kaplan Carlton is a mirror book for me. It's 1959, and Ruth Robb, her mother, and younger sister have moved back to Atlanta to live with her Methodist grandparents after her father's sudden and untimely death. Being Jewish in New York City was easy, but that isn't the case in the South. So when Ruth's grandmother encourages Ruth not to tell people she is Jewish, Ruth agrees. Keeping her secret means she gets to drink sweet tea with the other debutantes, swim at the club with Davis, and attend elite private parties with the other Atlanta aristocrats. While quietly attending temple on Saturdays, Ruth is reminded by the rabbi that the beauty of the South helps to conceal the hatred that simmers beneath the surface. And when that hatred is exposed close to home, Ruth is no longer willing to hide who she is. The window book I selected is Patron Saints of Nothing by Randy Ribé. Seventeen-year-old Jay was born in the Philippines and lived there until he was one. Then his family moved to the United States. As a young boy, his Filipino father and American mother took the family back to the Philippines to visit. While there, Jay and his cousin June formed a special bond. So when Jay learns that his cousin has been murdered, he is determined to discover the truth about what happened. When Jay goes to the Philippines to solve the mystery of June's murder, he ends up discovering truths about himself. This is a timely story about the drug wars taking place in the Philippines under President Dorte's rule. It is also a story of gaining understanding about one's identity, the danger of judging too quickly, and the meaning of family. Hello, my name is Amy Brown.
I'd like to repeat. So finally, because of this need for diversity, and we recognize that and we really embrace it, we've really tried to have some results-oriented service through our school library, results-driven service. So we've gotten together with other school districts. We've talked about this topic a lot. We've had specialized training from a book vendor about how to use a tool in order to really examine our collections and make sure that we are not missing certain things that we should be having in our school libraries. We're thinking about maybe even looking at diversity audits with other districts and what that would look like to really take a deep dive into our collections. Since COVID, every single librarian has had training to create webpages. And one of the things they share across these webpages are access to all books, including diverse selections. So I'm so proud of all of them, obviously, and I'm so proud of the people that made this video for you. And we're really thrilled to celebrate Read Across America all year long. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next presentation, 3.02, Elementary Spanish Immersion Programming.
So about a year ago, I think, we were standing here having a conversation about the beginning of our elementary Spanish immersion programming. And despite some of the challenges we've had this year, we want to share with you the success so far of that program and talk about our plans as we increase the number of students enrolled in our immersion program for next school year. So I know you've met Mike Glentro before, but just as a reminder, he's our coordinator of world language and also ELL in our school district. So I'm glad to have him here with us tonight.
Great, thank you. I'm real excited to talk to you about our program. I know some of you have been out to see it, and if you've not been out there, I recommend that you take a peek. So in our Spanish immersion program at Black Bob at Manchester Park, we currently have 87 students there participating. The staff that we have there are Manchester Park. We have two of our immersion teachers, Yolanda and Lindsay, are immersion teachers there in a Black Bob Elementary School. We have Alyssa and Melissa there and working with their principals. Two individuals that are not up there are our immersion aides that play a great role in the success of our program as well, Carmen Dudley and Sharon Hiddle. And the team has worked really well together collaboratively for the success of our program for this year. So I want to talk a little bit about what that program looks like and what happens during the day. So in our immersion classrooms for kindergarten, we have two different classes, and halfway through the day, they switch. So you have one class that starts the day with a Spanish immersion teacher, learning Spanish during the day, while the other class is starting their day in English. Then halfway through the day, they switch. And we use a natural break when they switch. So it might be lunch or specials. But they learn throughout the entire day, half their day in one language and half the day in another. So what are they learning in each classroom? So if you look at the graphic, you'll see on the right side, it shows what they learn in Spanish during half their day. So they learn math, science, and social studies, and then Spanish-language arts. And the math and the science and social studies that they're learning will coincide with our district and national standards. When they go to the English classroom for half the day, they have English-language arts and then also something we call content area reinforcement. And that's where the students will work a little bit with the vocabulary that they're learning in math and in science, but in English. So for example, in the Spanish classroom, if they're learning about shapes, knowing how shapes are, then in this English classroom, the teacher may incorporate those shapes throughout the lesson as well, so students have that reinforcement with vocabulary. But they're learning about science and social studies and math first and Spanish. So if you look over at the pictures, on the right side, we have our teacher at Manchester Park, and they're working on syllables in Spanish. If you look at the things on the walls, everything in the classroom is in Spanish that they're interacting with. And then in the picture on the lower right is our Spanish immersion teacher at Black Bob, and they're learning math, the same type of activities that you'd see in any math classroom in kindergarten that she's doing in Spanish with the kids and interacting with them. So something to remember too is that in the immersion classroom for kindergarten, it's like any other classroom, kindergarten classroom in our district. So the same type of activities. We have whole group, small group. Students are working with the center. Students are having purposeful play. The student on the left is doing a small group activity with his peers and the teacher. On the right side, you see things that students are learning how to write and taking home. They're taking home artifacts from their classroom in both English and in Spanish. We've had a lot of great feedback from parents that are really enjoying the experience that their students are having. They come home excited to learn and excited about their kindergarten year. We asked one of our kindergarten immersion teachers about the feedback that she gets from her parents. And so I'd like to share with you a little bit about what she said. This is Melissa Thorstall, our Black Bob Spanish immersion teacher.
So many stories, so many emails of just parents saying that they're using the language at home. They go home and try to teach moms and brothers and sisters how to speak the language, and dads. And so we have our little teachers going home and trying to teach their families the language. And it's just so exciting to see those emails and see that they're using this language outside of the classroom, and it's not just something that they do in the Spanish room. They use it everywhere, in the English room, at recess, at home. They're using it everywhere.
So looking forward to next year. It's only February, but we're already thinking, okay, what's next year going to look like? So we will start our lottery application enrollment on February 15th, where parents can go to our online immersion website. And if they would like their upcoming kindergartner to be put in the lottery, they fill out the application for that. Our current immersion students next year will then go on to first grade, where they'll have that similar experience, where they'll be learning half of the day in English and half of the day in Spanish. And of course, that will continue to fifth grade, and then they'll have special programming in middle school and high school as well. So we're really excited about that. Also, we appreciate all of your support. We wouldn't be able to have started the program without that. So, thank you.
Does anyone have any questions?
I have one.
Yes, absolutely.
Can only the students from Manchester Park and Black Bob attend these, or is it a lottery for district-wide?
It's for district-wide, so for sure. So any family in the Olathe school district can definitely submit the application. So we have students at both sites from all over the district. Absolutely.
Awesome. Where would they find the application?
So if they go to the, our Olathe School website. You go up to programs. Up at the top, you have it's academics and then immersion. Also, it's just olatheschools.org/immersion, and they can find it there.
This is so exciting. Thank you for your work on it.
Thank you. Have you been out there?
No, but I'd love to.
Let's go.
I have a question. Are we talking at all about expansion to other elementary schools at this time?
Yes, and we're definitely looking at which elementary schools. In researching that, we got slowed down a little bit with a lot of the COVID that was going on. For sure, we're just making sure that this program was successful starting out. That's definitely something worth looking at.
And I had a question about the, how many people did we have to, like, I guess, turn away last year roughly? Do you know, I mean, do we have to turn away any, or?
Yes. So we did have, I would say, about 30 families on the waiting list that were unable to get in, correct?
Thank you.
And something kind of fun to share with the board is I get emails a lot from families wanting to apply. And how do they apply? And where do they need to live? And I got an email from a family who said, "In about five years, we're going to think about starting a family." And so where, when that happens, we'd like them to be able to participate. So they were wondering about the lottery. And I said, "Well, I can tell you what it works right now, but in about 10 years, when you have that kindergartner, email me again, and we'll see where we're at." So it's really great. We definitely have the interest in the community. So, thank you.
Well, thank you. This is super exciting, and this is something I've been excited about for, ever since I became a school board member. So it's fun to see it in action and growing and hope to continue.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, on to our final information presentation, 3.03, reopening update. So we'll let Mr. Allison provide an update here, and then we'll have an opportunity for board to ask questions. And then I believe there might be a motion potentially. So that's how, that's the order we'll go in here.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Beveridge. Got kind of a wide variety of areas I want to touch as we think about our return to learning. As we've talked about so many different aspects of what education has had to look like this year, one of those questions that we tackled earlier in the year is, how are we going to look at where are our students? What type of progress are they making given what school looks like in a global pandemic? So there are a couple of data points, and we'll delve into this more later in the spring when we do a kind of a bigger picture as we think about student performance. But as you can imagine, with remote learners, in-person learners, hybrid, the different formats we've been in, tracking student performance has been difficult. But there have been a number that folks have asked questions about, and I wanted to touch on those tonight. One was in regards to high school and how many students had received Fs. So going back and looking at first semester this year, which we've just finished to first semester last year, because that second semester was very different for us. If you take a look at it, you've got to slice it a couple of different ways. So on the surface, the number of failing grades are up about eight and a half percent. But that's total number of failing grades. Then we need to look at how many students have received a failing grade compared to the previous year. And that's about a 2% increase. And when we peel that layer a little bit more, the increase is focused in a couple of different areas. Full-time remote students in some cases. So what the difference between those two numbers tell us is that we had more students that failed more than one class. So when you look at students with at least one, and then you look at the total, we saw that students had failed more than one class. Again, full-time remote seemed to have a higher percentage than in-person. The difference across the grades, you can imagine that the transition grade, ninth grade, coming in was more difficult for students. And then the other piece is breaking that down and looking at some of our free and reduced lunch numbers. And those are up. One of the issues that I know the high schools have been trying to work with is in some families, due to the economics of the pandemic, that they elected remote learning for their students because they thought it would give them more time or flexibility in which they could work to help support the family. And those are the students that we really have those concerns about, that family pressures, in many cases, have made schools secondary in trying to make sure, how do we bolster and support those students? School counselors, teachers- School counselors, teachers, administrators are working getting students that did have a, a failing grade in that first semester in the credit recovery. How do we, how do we get those credits back? When you look at the, the juniors, seniors, the variance from this year to last year is about a one and a half, 2% difference. So it really is the, the younger grades, those that were full-time remote and those that we, we know have other, other issues and family pressures that may have impacted education. So it's something our high schools have watched, our middle schools have watched very carefully to try to see how do we support students? As we come out of, and I know that's not probably good, a, a good way to describe it, but as, as we hopefully get back to a more traditional look at school next year and, and we have a, a more consistent typical school year, the, the necessity for the school district to put in place supports for students, some of them have been very successful this year. Others may not have, but for us to be able to assess and know, where are the students, where do they need to be? And where do we need to put supports in? And that's not just, we're going to do a summer school. It's going to be the next 18 to 24 months that we need to, to build and think about differently. How do we structure some reading acquisition? And, and all those types of factors are, are going to be focuses for the district. They, they have to be, but this gives us a, a little bit of a snapshot on where do we think we're, we're going to need to be as, as we move forward. When we take a look at MAP data, MAP data is a, is a little more of a, of a broader window because we're looking at the 17, 18 fall data to the 2021 fall data. And, and the reason being is last year, if you remember in the fall, we were implementing Mastery Connect. So we did not do a fall MAP data. And the year before is when they had all sorts of issues with their, their software system. So, you know, to really have two solid years where we know there were no other issues around that, that's what we took a look at, at the comparison. We've actually done a, a very good job in getting students assessed. About 95% of our, our students, which is well above what NWEA would tell us most of the school districts have been able to do. So when we look at that data, what we're seeing is, is mirroring to a certain extent, the national data, which says there, there is a gap between. In math, it's about a four-point difference. And in reading, it's a one or two-point difference. So while we've got a gap, it's not nearly as large as, as, as it could be or as it follows the, the national data. So I think our, our teachers have done an excellent job in planning, focusing on those, those standards. And I think that part of that work with Mastery Connect was timely because it, it set our focus and our discussion and the big three and all those pieces put us in a position where we know we're going to have, just because of the nature of the way the school year has gone, some, some gaps in, in some areas that we're going to need to focus on, but that, that, that gap is, is smaller than so many others that we're seeing as, as we look at, at that data. Again, work to do, but it, it's giving us a decent snapshot of where we are. When we think about ACT data and we look at last year's and, and you got to remember, some of these students were taking it after, when ACT finally allowed testing to occur and those types of things. What we're seeing is about a point seven difference in scores. So we saw as a state of Kansas, about a point eight drop. We saw about a point seven. So the state of Kansas was 20.4 on the composite and we were 22.6. In the previous year, it was 21.2 for the state and 23.3. So there you see the, the differential. So again, we, we know there are going to be areas that we're going to have to focus on. High schools are diligently working on helping seniors. As I said, look at credit recovery, all those types of things to make sure that, that the seniors that, that are, are not progressing as we would hope, that they're going to continue to make progress toward graduation. So those are a few of the areas that we've talked about earlier in the fall, wanting to track. And I wanted to give you an update on what that looked like for, for first semester. Any questions before? Cause I'm going to shift gears and it's going to be something completely different.
Yes, I have a question. Can you speak to some of the things? I know you said, mentioned going into, you know, the, of this future school years, we'll have to take some steps. But can you mention some of the things we, we have done this year to help address students that we can't contact? Whether it's home visits or having teams reach out to them and that type of thing?
Yes, the, the schools have been really diligent in trying to reach out to those students that they couldn't contact. Counselors have, have played a, a key role in that contacting parents. Our teachers, the same is if they see a student that's starting to disengage, trying to, to re-engage them, to provide opportunities for, for them to, to make up work, to, to help them catch up with some, some key concepts. As we move forward, it, it's going to have to look different than we've traditionally done it because of just the, the situation where we are. That is where, and we'll, we'll talk more hopefully next month when we have some definitive guidelines, some of the federal funding that the district will receive. We've, we've got about a 18 to 24-month window for, for those funds, which will allow us to, to not only look at summer programs, but after-school programs, in-school tutoring, those types of things to, to help students as, as we move forward. It, it has been a, a key focus for our, our schools to try to make sure that they're engaging with students and particularly to, to reach out and do the best they can to re-engage those that, that they're not seeing participate at this point in time. And that's, that's a, that's a challenge, particularly for some of those full, those students that chose full remote. You know, but that's, that's something I know in talking to a, a number of teachers and principals, how hard they've worked when a student hasn't been logging on to make the contact, to work with the counselor, home visits in, in some cases and, and other, other ways to try to engage. Working with the, the student's friends, you know? I haven't, I haven't seen Mr. McCune log on for a while. What's, what's going on? And, and that's, that's just how, you know, our, our staff works, whether it's a pandemic or not, but it's created extra challenges for them and they've, they've stepped up to try to, try to do that.
Mr. Allison, you, you talked a little bit about some of the things with credit recovery and I know a lot of that's done. You know, Mill Creek obviously has, has a lot of that. Do we have the, the capacity kind of over the next, I guess, 18, 24 months to, to utilize people there? Do we have the staffing to do that? Or will that have to be adjusted significantly to maybe do some onsite versus, you know, maybe longer-term situations at Mill Creek? Has that been looked at yet?
Yeah, it'll be well beyond Mill Creek on a, on a K-12 focus. Dr. Yeager and Learning Services are currently looking at what's that plan look like? Not just short-term, but long-term. I, I think my, my answer at this point in time is yes, we're, we're going to have staff that, that we're going to be able to utilize to help that, but we're probably looking at needing, needing to add some staff during that time period. And that's, that's part of what the funds will be available for us to do, to, to meet some of those needs. The, the key piece in, in not only the planning will be as, as we start the next school year, we'll be assessing where the students are. So that'll, that'll be another key piece. We're, we've got an idea and continue to measure with, with MAP and, and those types of things this year. We still don't know what the status of the state assessment is going to be. With the new administration, that, that may change. Previous administration had said state assessments are, are still going to, to be required for students. State assessments in, in Kansas are really just a, a check of the wind because of the, the lack of specificity you get, particularly in item analysis and those types of things for students makes it difficult for us to use other than kind of that general, are we headed in the right direction? Because why it may show us as an example in math that, you know, eighth graders, they, they didn't meet the, the standard that we had hoped that they would meet in math, but it doesn't give us enough information to drill down and say, what is it specifically? Is it that they can't divide fractions? You don't get that level of specificity with the state exam, which is why Mastery Connect and, and MAP are important for us to be able to measure where students are. So at that point, we'll, we'll have a, a framework put together, a plan in place. And then as we continue to determine where our students are, what their needs are, then we'll, we'll adjust as we go. And, you know, the funding isn't, isn't, you know, we're, we're going to be talking a couple of million dollars, which sounds like a lot of money, but when you're a district our size, that's, that's not going to handle a lot of, a lot of staff. So we'll get, we'll have more information for you and Dr. Yeager will be able to give you an idea of what that plan looks like hopefully next month.
Thank you.
Mr. Allison, do we know the federal funds? Is it a grant format or do they send it to the state and the state divides it up? How will we?
It's sent through the states and it's allocated based on your free and reduced lunch format. So the, the higher level of poverty you have, the, the more the, the funds will flow and, and are allocated that way. So, you know, we're 29% little, little, little less allocation, which compared to several of our neighbors will receive more funding. But if, if you think in terms of Wichita or Topeka, it'll be much less. But that, that's so far the way they've allocated the funds.
I think we can move on to the?
All right, I'll shift gears. Vaccines. Let's talk about shots, everybody's favorite. It's kind of amazing. Nobody likes shots, but that, that's changed just a little bit. As, as we're all aware, vaccines are, are starting to become available. We actually are hosting tonight and tomorrow the first of the K-12 vaccines at Olathe Northwest. The county and Children's Mercy have worked together to help provide that for the Johnson County School District. So it's not just Olathe, it's all the Johnson County School Districts. The, the issue with the vaccines at this point in time, as, as everybody's aware, is the availability. So the doses that they were able to, to provide for K-12 will allow us as a, as a county, for those school districts to focus on predominantly this first go-around is around special education staff, early childhood staff, those that deal with students that have, are medically fragile themselves and also have difficulty masking. So those, those individuals are at a higher level of risk, staff members. So the way it currently is, is designed to work, they notified us how many vaccines would be available to Olathe and they tried to do that on a percentage basis of number of vaccines to size of district and, and those types of things. So we had the availability of, of around 1,000. It, it's a little bit interesting in that depending on which syringe is used and how the vials work, are there five doses, six doses, seven doses? So it, it is a, a bit fluid and that we'll work to, to vaccinate those staff members. Our, our next look will be to look at those 65 and older. And we will continue to focus on age bands. About a five-year age band that will, as, as we look at the evidence, you know, you talked to, to the, the medical experts. Those that are older tend to have a higher likelihood of hospitalization and, and complications. So as we looked, we're right now going to focus on, on the age bands. The issue surrounding all this is the availability. So there's no guarantee. We were, we were hoping originally when we had these conversations that this would be kind of our weekly allotment that we could plan for and every week. There's no guarantee that there will be any next week or the week after, or instead of 1,000, it may be 250. So trying to work through and, and, and get everybody organized so that we can look at, at groups and then be prepared to communicate with those individuals that are in, in the next group. If it's the next 250, here's, here's the, the communication. The county's working with us. They're, they realize the importance of getting our, our staff vaccinated as soon as possible is important for the community as well. But they're just at the, at the mercy of what they'll receive from the state at any given time. So it'll be a work in progress as more vaccines are also approved. That should improve availability and will, will help us as, as we continue to move forward. The other complication to some of this coordination is that second vaccine. So they, the state has set aside when they send the first vaccine that there's, there's going to be the second vaccine so that there's not a concern there. But the likelihood of a reaction to the second vaccine is, is much higher than the first. So that's something as, as districts, we also looked at why the age band and it, it will spread out across our, our buildings so that you don't have, you know, a large percentage of a single staff that, that's having a reaction. It's also why we're working with the county to try to look at doing those Fridays, evenings, weekends eventually. And if Children's Mercy is capable of helping us do that so that if somebody does have a reaction, they have the time to, to, to get over that. So far, it's, it's mixed. You know what? It can be minimal to low-grade fever, chills, those, those types of things that may last a, a day or two. So it's also part of the equation we have to, we have to think about as, as we prepare for vaccinating our staff. The hope would be supply goes up, county gets more and we can accelerate this process and get our, our staff vaccinated as soon as possible. But right now, and that's the big question I've been asking is, there's this perception like, well, every educator is getting a vaccine eventually. But that's, that's, it's right now, when you think about it, there's 25,000 people in Johnson County working for the school districts and they've got about 1,800 or so vaccines in this first go-around. It's going to, it's going to take us a while if, if that's the type of, of numbers that we get moving forward. Other piece to remember is we are seeing progress in community spread and the, those numbers are, are trending in a positive way compared to where we were a month ago. I think that's, speaks highly for our community, understanding the need to move those numbers down, how that impacts schools, continuing to mask, to social distance when, when appropriate. All those mitigation factors we've been talking about since June don't change and they won't change under the vaccine. And I think that's, that's a misnomer. I got the vaccine and I don't have to wear a mask. I don't, that, that's not the case. And we're, we're going to have to, to continue to be diligent so we can continue to trend in, in the right way. But we'll, we'll continue to give you updates as soon as we get into a, a better idea what the county thinks if there's a consistent number. We'll be reaching out to staff here shortly to, to explain how that process will work, what to look for, what they need to, to know so that they can be ready. And in many cases, the, the county may not be able to give us a lot of heads up on when it's going to occur. So all of the school districts, as we're putting our plans together and identifying staff are looking at, how's that going to work? And notification may be quick. You may be on a Wednesday asked to make an appointment for Friday, much as we had to, we had to do this week when they found that they were getting more doses than, than they originally anticipated. So quite a bit of, of organization left to, to make sure that we've got that in place. But it's, it's exciting to think we're. it's, it's exciting to think we're, we're started. I mean, we've been talking about this for almost a year now, and what that would mean, and, and how that, that could change our approach. So off to a start, we just hope it picks up a little, little faster over the next couple of weeks. So, any questions?
Have our school nurses received their vaccines?
Yes, school nurses are actually, this week, most of them received their second vaccine. The county, if you'll remember, the first group that they made available were those that were licensed healthcare. So nurses, P T O T, those groups, and they've started to receive this week their, their second vaccination. So, and that's where we did, we, we, we did see some of the nurses have reactions to, to that second vaccine. It varied from nothing to, you know, some, some fever and, and chills and, and body aches, just like we're seeing reported in, in the news as, as you read the articles, and it varies from person to person. But when you're talking large numbers of folks, if you have, you know, whatever percentage that have those reactions, we, we have to think about that as, as we establish particularly those second vaccinations.
And internally, who's running the communication for us?
Ms. Colby's at this point in time. As, as we get a better understanding of what the county thinks moving forward, we're looking at, we realize if, if a consistent number of doses roll through, and as quickly as we're going to need to, to move, we'll, we'll have some folks that will be assigned just to, to help with coordinating the vaccines and communicating to staff and, and those types of things. So I think we're, I think we've, we've got a good start.
Awesome.
Mr. Allison, there's, there's not any requirement, but you've got initial indications that there are a high-level staff that are, are, are planning to sign up? Is that kind of the...
We did. We sent out a, a week or so ago, a survey that if a vaccine was available, would you be interested in, in taking it? And we were in the 88% of those that, that applied. You know, the other thing we're encouraging staff is, if, if you have the option to, to get it in some other venue, when CVS and Walgreens, if you live in a county that's, that's doing something different, if you have the opportunity, take it. And we'll be, next week, providing a, a method by which staff can tell us, I have no interest in taking a vaccine, so we know, we can remove them as, as we take a look at the list, or at any point in time, I may have had the opportunity, my doctor's got it available now, I took it, so that we, we can make sure we're, we're getting the next folks in line for those, those doses. Children's Mercy in the county, because of the length of time, once the, the Pfizer vaccine is what they're using right now as thawed, how long it can be refrigerated, once you've, you know, pierced the, the vial, you have a, a number of hours in which you, you can still use that. Their intent is to make sure that there isn't a single dose that, that goes unused, and that is also our goal, and the school districts are, are working to figure out ways in which we can, we can get staff notified and there quickly if, if they've got additional dosages. So like I said, exciting, we just hope it, it will continue to pick up, and we can make progress sooner than later on getting everybody vaccinated.
All right. Any other questions? Mr. Allison, did you have any other updates, or is that... Okay. So now is the time for motions, if somebody has one, and I believe somebody does.
I have, I have a motion.
Okay.
Do you have one? Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
Ms. Felter?
I move to open all of our schools for in-person learning with our current mitigation protocols in place on March the 1st, 2021, while retaining the remote learning option for students enrolled in this learning mode, and work with J C D H E to modify the gating criteria to reflect the most recent CDC recommendations regarding in-person learning and managing spread within our schools. Any teacher who wants out of their current contract due to COVID-19 concerns should be released with no penalty.
Second.
Okay. So motion by Ms. Felter in a second. We'll give it to Mr. McKeon. And so I've read my Robert's Rules that Joy got me here, so I'm trying to follow, follow that as we go. I'm supposed to reread the motion, so I'm going to reread it real quick, and then I will give Ms. Felter an opportunity to discuss, and then all of us will have an opportunity to, to discuss. So move to open all of our schools for in-person learning with stringent mitigation protocols in place on March 1st, 2021, while retaining the remote learning option for students enrolled for such, and work with J C D H E to modify the gating criteria to reflect the most recent CDC recommendations regarding in-person learning and managing spread within our schools. Any teacher who wants out of their contract due to COVID-19 concerns should be released with no penalty. Okay. So the floor is yours.
Thank you. And if, if this is important enough, that I'd like to present my oral argument, and I'm going to read it, because I don't want to miss anything presented. So I would like to present my oral argument supporting opening all of our schools for in-person learning. I've worked over the past couple of weeks with district leadership on this motion. This is not a surprise that I am springing on them. Their input and recommendations molded the content of this motion. The pandemic has presented many challenges, hardships, and loss over the past year. Early on, we did not know much about this horrific virus. As a district, we sought direction from a broad range of experts that provided a best guess framework as guidance for how to move school forward during this pandemic. From the very start of the pandemic, and consistently since, this board has promised to follow science, specifically saying, as we know better, we will do better. Objective science evolves as data provides a clearer picture. Our community efforts to slow the spread of the virus are working. The J C D H E data today shows Johnson County at a 7% positive rate, which is half of what it was less than a month ago. Our percent positive has been on a constant and dramatic decline since January the 7th. Kansasans have done an excellent job slowing the spread of COVID-19 over the past month as well, with the percent positive as of January 31st down to 6.26% for the entire state, and the incident rate is now 187 per 100,000, and trending downwards in all age groups steadily since January the 10th. There's good news on the hospitalization data as well. Johnson County experienced a decrease of 17.57% in all hospitalizations last week, and the Mark region experienced an 11.9% decrease in all hospitalizations last week. And speaking with several CEOs and CMOs from our Johnson County hospitals, they are saying that the situation is markedly better, and with the vaccination rollout, they are optimistic. Speaking of vaccinations, our beloved teachers and school staff have been prioritized to receive the vaccine. In Olathe, we have a solid plan to get those vaccines in the arms of our team. The rollout is underway. We do not need to wait until all teachers have received the vaccine in order to open our schools. Yesterday, the CDC Director, Dr. Walensky, said there is increasing data to suggest that schools can safely reopen, and that safe reopening does not suggest that teachers need to be vaccinated. She added, vaccinations of teachers is not a prerequisite for safely reopening schools. Let's just look at a few examples from the latest science. Last week, experts from the CDC published a piece in JAMA, writing, "The accumulating data now suggests a path forward to maintain or return primarily or fully to in-person instructional delivery." As schools in the U.S. and abroad have reopened amid the pandemic, there has been little evidence that schools have contributed meaningfully to increased community transmission. A peer-reviewed Swedish study published in the New England Journal of Medicine looked at 1.95 million kids in school from March to June. In this cohort, 15 required ICU care and zero died. Teachers in this study had no higher rate of getting severe infection than people working in different occupations. In this study, they weren't wearing masks and not doing much as far as mitigation. In North Carolina, the study was conducted during a period of brisk transmission, and they were only able to document around 70 cases in schools. If you were to extrapolate, the general population spread occurring during that same time, you would expect to have seen at least 800 cases in these schools. There were around 70. There were zero cases of adult, child to adult, within-school transmission. A recent German study suggested no increase of transmission with schools opening, and no decrease in transmission with schools closing. The CDC study of Mississippi schoolchildren found those who tested positive for the virus were not more likely to have attended in-person classes than those who tested negative, but they were more likely to have attended family gatherings, playdates, parties, and funerals. Researchers say that in some cases, closing schools and leaving children in the care of adults who do not require them to wear masks or socially distance may put them at a higher risk of contracting and spreading the virus. A European Center for Disease Prevention and Control Report from December 2020 includes findings from 17 countries, and concluded that schools were not associated with accelerating community transmission. I'm going to take a drink real quick. Closing our schools to our students was based on a risk proposition that was primarily unknown last March. Closing schools was necessary, it saved lives. However, now that we know much more about COVID-19, keeping our schools closed, or only partially open, to our middle school and high school students almost a year later is a completely different story. Based on recent evidence and recommendations, it is clear that the benefits of ongoing school closures are far outweighed by the harm caused by kids not being in school. Missing meals, child abuse and neglect, social isolation, stress on the family and child, learning loss, mental health issues, and the lack of access to essential services, just to name a few. We have 3 million American children that no one has spoken to since March. The sacrifice we are requiring from these children for a theoretical and uncertain benefit to other people is unconscionable. I predict that the data will bear out that the most disadvantaged children have paid these deepest price. The children in poverty, children of color, children with special needs and learning differences, children who are homeless, and children in foster care. Last week, K-12 Dive reported that schools saw a 66% jump in the number of overall safety incidents during the first three months of the 2021 school year, when compared to the same time the last year. The increases were spread across four kinds of incidents: suicide and self-harm, violence towards others, nudity and sexual content, and drugs and alcohol. We know that this virus is deadly and extremely dangerous, and we are seeing new, even more contagious variants of COVID-19 across the globe. We must protect and provide for our at-risk population. As a district, we have done this, with the total closure and then gradual, partial reopening of our schools, as well as offering a remote learning option. Our weak link in mitigation is physical distancing. In our schools, it is impossible to maintain six feet of distance with all students back in person. It's worth noting that the schools in the CDC reference studies didn't consistently maintain six feet of distance, and in some instances, masks were only required when indoors and closer than six feet. So there's variation in the implementation of mitigation strategies, and zero examples of perfection achieved. That said, we must provide an option for our teachers and staff members who have risk factors that will make it unsafe for them to teach in person. We have requested that J C D H E review their prescribing learning modes in light of the recent CDC recommendations to open schools. Our J C D H E incident rate has been continually decreasing since January 14th, and it currently is still in the red zone. The incident rate in the gating criteria as it stands will likely prevent middle school or high school students returning to full-time in-person learning this year and possibly next. This must be adjusted to reflect the most up-to-date scientific evidence. Should J C D H E continue to recommend including the incident rate in the gating criteria as it stands now, thus preventing full-time in-person learning for many of our students, our traditional model of infection control at the school level could provide us a framework we need to manage COVID-19 spread within our schools. Our traditional infection control model is an ongoing partnership with J C D H E, and it incorporates key data points specifically tracking both staff and students that are absent due to illness or quarantines. It is worth noting that internationally, efforts to minimize school closures in some countries have been implemented with success by using models similar to our traditional infection control methods. Taiwan avoided widespread closures by implementing local temporary school closures based on thresholds for infected cases within individual schools. There are no perfect answers in this situation. Everyone wants to have children back in school learning. The great divide rests on the timing and the process for fully reopening our schools. This motion defines a sensible path forward by providing several weeks for our district staff to do the vast amount of work retired, required to fully open our district. Our district is very large. It also, the time allows for a greater number of teachers and staff to get a vaccine. The time allows for our community spread to continue to decrease, and provides over two weeks post-Super Bowl in case there's a spike due to gatherings. It continues to offer remote learning for those families who have enrolled their students for this option. It provides teachers who do not feel comfortable returning to the classroom due to COVID-19 concerns the ability to get out of their contracts with no penalties. And it seeks adapted scientific guidance from J C D H E to shepherd us through the remainder of this pandemic, so that we can be responsive to surges. Each individual has a different life circumstance and risk thermostat. We simply cannot create sweeping policies that keep our schools closed to in-person learning to accommodate what the most risk adverse person requires. I ask each of my fellow board members to support this sensible motion and to get our children back in school on March the 1st. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Open it up to comments, questions.
Open it up to comments, questions, thoughts from board members?
First of all, thank you, Lieta. I know it sounds like you might have a future profession at Johnson County Department of Health, perhaps, when you're done here. But truly, thank you. It sounds like you've done a lot of thought into this motion. So if anything, I would say, depending on how we vote as a group, you know, a plan at least is owed to those that selected to start in person. And so, I mean, I do appreciate everything you did. I do think March 1st is a great day to do that, giving us some time and a lot of the reasons that you pointed out. And, you know, there's, a lot of the points that you mentioned are things that I've been thinking about as well as we go down this path. And is it the right answer? We're never going to know in advance. It might be the wrong answer, but at this point, I think that everything that we've heard you say today and everything we've read, I think there are good enough reasons, too, that we can move forward with this plan, in my opinion. There's going to be challenges. We've had challenges all along. I think this school year with going back and forth, with quarantines, with all that, some of that stuff's going to continue. But I do think there's a lot of mitigation things that are becoming a norm. Some improvements, like you mentioned, community-wise, vaccination throughout the community, not just our staff, but in general, that will be helpful. And we're going to take those challenges head-on, and we'll deal with them as we go along here. And I know it's not a lot of time. It's a couple of months of school, two and a half months of school. But I do think that will be meaningful for a lot of students, staff. I know a lot of them are teaching double classes and stuff. Hopefully, this will help a little bit there. And I plan to support your motion. So thank you for putting your time into this.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gary. Anyone else have?
Yeah, I'd like to just comment as well. I appreciate Lieta's work and her research, the time that she has taken to deliver this to us, the board, and also the community. What we know now is much more than what we knew nine months ago or 10 months ago. I think science is continuing to evolve. We're continuing to learn about this. And to find an opportunity where we could actually get our students back in the classroom, I think we should take every effort that we can without just pushing aside the guidelines. I think we still need to follow those. But we got to find a way to help our students get back in the classroom. And I think this is a, this is one way. There are lots of options out there. But I think for our district, it's a place for us to start. I think our district has shown and proved that we can mitigate. We have social distance. We've washed our hands. We've done all the things we can do. And we're trying to teach our students to continue to do that. I know we have faltered early last fall. You can see pictures of students or teams, you know, without masks. But I don't know that they're doing that now. I think we've learned our lessons. And I think we continue to need to give them that opportunity. But most importantly, I think it's the right thing to do, is getting them back. And this is a plan. Lieta, thank you very much for your research on this and sharing with us.
Thank you.
If I may, I'll echo, thank you, Lieta. This is clearly something that you've put a lot of work into, and I appreciate it. I too am encouraged by dropping numbers. I too believe that Johnson County Department of Health should relook at the gating criteria and make sure there is the best recommendation, given the information that we have. That said, we still can't mitigate in our secondary schools. We just can't, and we know that. And I know nothing's ever going to be ideal. But as I look at the numbers and I look at where we're at, we are so close to being able to get there using the criteria that we said that we would use, the gating criteria. This feels a little bit to me like, I don't want to say the cart before the horse, but almost out of order. So we've got some time. I would be in favor of revisiting and doing our snapshots a week at a time. And if we have to get back together for a special meeting to put our kids back in schools, there's nothing I want more. I just want to be consistent.
Could I ask a question real quick of Mr. Allison? Kind of relates to this. I know there's a lot of moving parts in this. And Lieta, I'm assuming has, you said you've visited with administration on timing and some things. I know there's food services, lunch, transportation that are all very big pieces of this. Thoughts on any of that? Is this a realistic timeframe with some of that given? February, I feel like our kids don't go to school that often any year. But is that realistic or?
Yes, I would say the first part of March. I mean, you have transportation routes have to be redone. Food service, we've talked about since this fall. It's about a two-week lead time for food. You know, we've got open positions in food service. So I can see that food service is going to need to be more grab-and-go for a period of time. You know, as we have not needed staff, we have not paid staff to not work in that capacity. So there's some staff that would have to be added. You know, teachers shifting planning time, middle school master schedules are going to have to be redone to a certain extent because we elected to try to maintain as much consistency as we could for our students in remote and in-person. So we have teachers doing both. And that, at the middle school, will take some adjustments. You know, the lunch is going to, is something that our secondaries have started in the fall, looking at how that would look. How do you mitigate it? How do you spread it out? It's going to mean lunch is going to look different at the high school because it's going to be multiple lunch periods. Power 50 is not an option underneath that. Those students that selected in-person, we would not have the capacity at this point in time to allow them to select remote at this stage because of the staffing requirements. So that's something I want to be pretty clear about, that shift. We did that at semester, and we rebalanced classes. And that's something that the schools had worked on, particularly the high schools, for a couple of months in preparation of that. So that's not something that can happen in a matter of a couple of weeks if you're trying to move a couple hundred students. So those are all aspects of some of the elements as we would make a change that we would have to deal with. I believe that the team would be capable of doing that by March 1.
Thank you.
I would just make a statement. I would assume that you've been ready to turn on this switch, whether it was last August or last November, if we would have decided to start school, you and your leadership team, I assume, were prepared to start within two weeks or three?
Yeah, the plan to be able to do it has been in place. But there's just the reality of the logistics and what that takes. As much as we'd like to say, hey, we'd love food service to be delivered in a week, it just, it doesn't work that way. So yes, you are correct. Knowing when we made the transition, the pieces and all that would need to be in place, now it's just, we have to do it.
I guess, anyone else? Go ahead, Chris.
So I appreciate the due diligence that you put into it. Sometimes I'm not sure on that. One of the concerns that I have is about the North Carolina study and about the Dr. Wolensky comments because they need additional context. And I did look into the fine print in the Peds Journal and the North Carolina study. And one of the things that I think has made us so successful is by operating in a hybrid model, we have been able to maintain a certain amount of distance. And that distance has been a key factor. And if you look deeply into the North Carolina study, that was a factor that they tracked as well. And it was done successfully in the public schools. But in the private schools that they measured against them, the private schools didn't do as well. And there's no citation as to whether or not the private schools were operating under the same alternating spacing. So they didn't have all students in the buildings at the same time. So I do think that we have to clarify what we're talking about when we say in-person. Because, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Allison, do we have any buildings that are closed to in-person classes right now?
No.
No. So our buildings are currently open to in-person learning? Is that accurate?
Yes, students attend?
Attend inside our buildings. The other thing is that that's the same point that was made in Dr. Wolensky's comments, that Dr. Wolensky was still talking about. It's not necessary for teachers to be vaccinated to have classes in-person. But what she means by in-person is essentially what we've been doing in Olathe really since two and a half weeks after we started schools at the elementary level. But even that, they started in a hybrid mode.
Hybrid, yeah.
So we have been implementing these great practices. That said, I'm not convinced that we aren't ready to move forward with having everybody in the buildings. But I think that when we're pulling those pieces of data, we do need to make sure that we've got the complete picture. And we're getting a lot of communications from folks in the community who want to highlight these particular pieces. And we've been doing these things. And I think that's part of why we've been so successful in Olathe. And I don't think we should lose sight of that.
Lieta, I too am appreciative of the time and effort you put into this. As Mr. Allison mentioned, the fact that students or families that have elected to be quote-unquote "in-person" with the understanding that it would be safe to do so and for us to make a decision and not allow them time to then make a counterdecision, I don't think that would be fair for those families to then make a decision based on our decisions. And I don't know if we would have the ability to open that back up if the board did decide to vote, quote-unquote, "in-person," whatever, five days a week, to allow parents or families to make additional decisions, whether or not they think that five days a week is safe or not. But that's something that I'm taking into consideration. But again, I'm appreciative of the time and effort that you put into this.
Thank you.
Shannon, did you have?
Just occurred to me a question. I don't know if this is for Lieta or for our parliamentarian down here at the end. But with this motion, let's say the thing that we don't want to have happen, happens. And we see higher community spread, and we would be in a position where we wouldn't even be talking about this. This kind of takes us out of the gating criteria, if I'm understanding. So, or does it? What would be the mechanism for us to say, okay, we need to go back hybrid?
John, would you speak a little bit about that and the incident rate?
Yes, I'm going to, you know, we would have to look at what is that mechanism? Is it through Johnson County Department of Health and Environment? Mrs. Felter made comments referencing the traditional communicable disease approach, which is on a building-by-building basis versus a district-wide basis. A number of school districts across the country have done it that way. Not knowing, I know there's conversation at both the county level and the state level regarding gating criteria and kind of reapplying what we now know. I don't know what that may look like. That could lend us what that mechanism would be.
Although it feels like we're close to getting back in person, would we be able to, with the incident rate included as it stands in the gating criteria?
No.
This year or even next year?
It would be possible, but it would be difficult. That issue of the 0 to 50, when it was established, for that to be in the green category, I'm not sure. And in talking to the medical folks and the epidemiologists, that that's a realistic target, not just now, but a year or 18 months from now, based on COVID and how long it'll take to get folks vaccinated and those types of things on a broader sense. And I do believe that's one of the areas that there's conversation around is, does that need to look different? Knowing what we know now, that rate and what the, you know, the percent positive and how that correlates to community spread and hospitalization is probably that piece that we could see some changes. I don't know for sure, but I know as more data, the CDC information, all of that, they continue to take a look at. Now, how quickly we might see a change, it could be a week, it could be two weeks. I just, I don't know. But I do know that they've regularly revisited what new information and what the pervasive science around it is to make changes.
If I understand our criteria correctly, we wouldn't have to get that into the green. If that got into the yellow based on, that's presuming that the percent positive, excuse me, goes down to 5%, we've got 2% to go, which would put us in the green. And if our student absenteeism stays in the green, we could have one factor in the yellow and still reasonably follow our criteria and get everybody back in school, so.
Although as it stands now, my understanding was we're not rounding, right? So all three would be in the green, the way that the motion was?
Okay.
Is that correct, Mr. Allison? That's the way I remember it from our discussion. Sorry to put you on the spot.
Because we're not rounding, but if you were... Mr. Hudson, are you pulling that up to help? If it was orange, green, green, so you're at 3, 5 divided, you'd be within, in the green category.
Okay. So I misremembered that, okay.
I'd interpreted it the same way.
Is that correct?
Okay, well, I'd just add, I'm going to be voting yes on this motion. I thought it was prudent to be cautious when we didn't have any science in the early stages of the school year. Thought it was prudent to be cautious during the winter months when we had the big spike. But for the reasons that Lieta mentioned there, I think science is showing that we can do this safely, and the risk reward is there to get kids in school full-time. I also wanted to mention, so Lieta mentioned some of the numbers, that cases per 100,000 peaked at 740. It didn't peak, but the most recent high was 743. It's at 313 now. I'm also, I appreciate the March 1st date because that kind of gets us through most of the winter sports, which are a little more difficult because most of them are indoor. We're going to get into the spring season and activities and sports where it's going to be more outside. So I'll be voting yes on this motion.
Thank you.
Mr. Allison, do you think it's possible, could we, as part of the reopening discussion, maybe next school board meeting, we could get a quick update on kind of how, anything that is decided by the JCDHE or DHEI and the Kansas Department as well, if there are any changes?
Yes, absolutely. Anytime we've seen changes in that, we've tried to bring that back so you were aware and could make decisions based on the most recent information.
Thank you.
So I was just going to add something to, kind of to address the question Shannon asked. I mean, if we did see a spike, Mr. Allison, we could still monitor the data, looking at it through the Johnson County, you know, using their gating criteria. And if we saw some kind of spike that would warrant a change, you know, we always have the ability to have a special meeting to make that change if that's necessary. So that is an option out there, is, you know, later in the month, you know. And we also have two other school districts in Johnson County that have middle and high schools in full-time now. So there'll be a full month of information there as well. So we can, as we move forward towards this, we can also kind of look to see what's happening in those two school districts.
Yes, we monitor also a comparison of student absentee rates, staff, positive COVID quarantines, and we kind of benchmark against where the community spread has been in those areas. What we haven't seen is, you know, when the community has had high spikes, our numbers have been within a percent or two typically variance. We haven't seen the significant swings that the county has seen as a whole with the population. So those would all be aspects we continue to monitor. And if we saw a change in that, then yes, I would be advocating that we, regardless of when that occurs, then we're back together to talk about what dynamics have changed.
Mr. Allison, I'm sorry to belabor this a little bit more, but have we seen much this second? I know we were one of the first schools to go back in hybrid. much this second, I know we, we were one of the first schools to go back in hybrid, come in after the holiday break in January, has our sub fill rate been, been good, strong? I mean, how, how have we been sitting with that?
Yeah, our, our substitute fill rate's been in the, the mid to upper 90s since we returned from break. I think there's, there's a couple factors there. One, the absentee rate for staff, you know, after we came off break, I think folks have a chance to, to, to rest and, and recover, so we, when we take a, a comparison look, Monday is actually set to be our snapshot date, so we would look at attendance, student attendance, you know, that's been getting closer to, to, to almost even as, as we've watched that for, for the last eight or nine days, unless there were huge absences today. And then, you know, with, with our subs, our ability to staff, whether it comes to food service or bus service, all of those are factors that if, if that changes, then we have to, we would have to step back and reconsider as, as we've done earlier. HR worked diligently to, to try to increase the, the sub pool. When we finish semester, we then have the opportunity to, to hire those student teachers that finish first semester, and we always see a little uptick typically in our ability to, to have a, a broader pool. The, the big issue for us, if you'll remember, around subs is not necessarily just the size of the pool, it's how many days are those individuals that are subbing for us subbing, and that, you know, picking up multiple dates, and that so far, we're, we're looking pretty, pretty good on, on that. I think the, the lowest I can recall since we've been back is about 94% rate, but it's, it's typically been in the 97, 98% range.
All right. Any other comments or questions?
Maybe one quick question. Mr. Allison, just because this motion specifically mentioned teachers and allowing teachers out of their contract without penalty, can you speak to maybe what, if there was a mass exodus of teachers, the impact or what that percentage number could be and how that would, what position they'll put in there?
I, I, I don't know how many of our, our teachers would, would elect at this point in time. Yes, I mean, that could have a severe impact on the district if, if there were large numbers. I mean, it's, it's going to have an impact if, if you have a, say, a high school chemistry teacher that decides that they'd like to be released from their contract, that's not going to be a position, we're going to, we're going to find a quality candidate at, at this point in time, most likely, so there could be some definite impacts to how that impacts specific courses or if the numbers are, are significant that would have a, create an issue for us in staffing.
All right. Well, I will reread the motion and then have.
Do you have it written down, Mrs. Felter?
I do.
It's, the one on this paper is a little bit different than what she read, so you probably should read what she read.
Okay, can I just ask Ms. Felter to read it, read it then one more time? I'll just do that.
Thank you. I move to open all of our schools for in-person learning with our current mitigation protocols in place on March the 1st, 2021, while retaining the remote learning option for students enrolled in this learning mode, and work with JCDHE to modify the gating criteria to reflect the most recent CDC recommendations regarding in-person learning and managing spread within our schools. Any teacher who wants out of their current contract due to COVID-19 concerns should be released with no penalty.
All right. Joy?
Ms. Felter?
Yes.
Mr. Gary?
Yes.
Mr. Wickliff?
No.
Mr. Boyd?
No.
Mr. Beveridge?
Yes.
Mr. McKeon?
Yes.
Ms. Schultz?
Yes.
All right. Motion passes. So I'm going to go off the cuff here for a second, which is probably going to get my wife heartburn watching it at home, but I so appreciate how we as a board can discuss this topic, respect each other. I think we all agree that reasonable people can look at this data and come to different conclusions, and I respect everyone on this board for this. I would just ask, you know, for people in the community, I guess first, on this topic, just get off Facebook. It's just a cesspool of negativity and closed-mindedness, and reach out to somebody, you know, reach out to somebody that disagrees with you and listen to what they have to say on both sides. We just need to be able to do that as a community and frankly, as a country, and I appreciate that we can do it here at this board, so. With that being said, we will move on to action consent. Does anyone have any questions or comments about 4.01 through 4.06?
I move to approve action consent, agenda items 4.01 through 4.06 as presented.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Gary, a second by Mr. Wickliff.
Mr. Gary?
Yes.
Mr. Wickliff?
Yes.
Mr. Boyd?
Yes.
Mr. Beveridge?
Yes.
Mr. McKeon?
Yes.
Ms. Schultz?
Yes.
Ms. Felter?
Yes.
All right, and now on to action bids, contracts, agreements, 5.01 through 5.10. Does anyone have anything they'd like to pull out or ask questions about?
Second.
All right.
I'd move to approve action items, bids, contracts, and agreements, 5.01 through 5.10.
Second.
All right. Motion by Mr. McKeon, was that Mr. Boyd? Second, second by Mr. Boyd.
Ms. Felter?
Yes.
Mr. Gary?
Yes.
Ms. Wickliff?
Yes.
Mr. Boyd?
Yes.
Mr. Beveridge?
Yes.
Mr. McKeon?
Yes.
Ms. Schultz?
Yes.
All right, and then action other, I think we'll take these separately, and I know Mr. Boyd has, he's going to tweak the motion, but I think before you do that, I'd like to just allow the opportunity for questions just about this topic in general. So does anyone have any topic or questions for staff about 6.01?
Yeah, and if, if Mr. Allison could just kind of give a rundown of what the rationale is here, and you see that it looks a little different to form your own police department?
Yes, I'd be happy to, and, and Mr. Keiger is also here and could help address this. Kansas statute allows police departments to share information between departments, and we periodically, whether it's student issues, parent issues, staff issues, there's limited amount of information that they can share with us, though it's directly impacting us as we're trying to make decisions, whether it's around safety and, and other aspects. So there, there is the opportunity for us to establish a police department, which would be, which you would be approving this evening. It's, it's required that a commissioned law officer would, would be in charge of that police department, which is, is Mr. Keiger. Our intent is, this is not to arm anyone, it is not to establish a, a police department with multiple officers and roles, and we do have school districts in, in the area, neighbors, that have had armed internal police departments for decades. That is not our intent here. The reason we believe it is important to, to, to do this, it's a, a process then that the Kansas Highway Patrol, upon your approval, we would, we would commission and establish that police department, is so that Mr. Keiger can have direct communication and the full set of facts with any of the local police departments. And remember, we, we have Lenexa, Overland Park, and Olathe that we deal with on a regular basis as well, and at times, other municipalities. So our focus is on information sharing and for us to be able to make decisions that, in a more timely fashion, with the information we need to make the best decision, so that, that's our intent, and this is just the process by which we have to go through under Kansas statute to be able to do that.
Thank you.
Is this something that happens that we don't feel like we have adequate information, like once a year, once every couple of years, or once a month, or like, that's, I mean, any idea on that, or?
Inspector McMullin probably has a, has a better feel. It's fairly regular.
Okay. Yeah, I don't need specific numbers.
I can tell you, it's a, it's at a minimum a monthly basis, but most likely, most often a weekly basis, where given the size and scope of our district, there, there's incidences weekly where, whether it's anything from an, an auto accident to a suicide, a house fire, a threat of violence against the school, whatever, many times these things are happening late at night, and the, the ability to get real-time information from our law enforcement partner is critical in terms of student safety and staff safety, many times immediately. So it would definitely be a very benefit to our students and our staff and our district.
And I believe Dr. McMullin would agree, it's not that we don't have communication and that they communicate with us, what this does is also expand the scope of the information they're able to provide us. So oftentimes, we can get kind of the, the cursory aspect of it, but the details that would, that would help us, the, the scope and depth of what they can share is different, and that, that can be monumental in, in, in some situations.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right. So Mr. Boyd mentioned before the meeting that he had a slight modification to the motion, so.
Just so you know, the, the motions that are on board docs are recommendations, they are not necessarily the motions. Whatever the motion is, is, and what you pass is what goes into the minutes and is considered.
Okay. So I would ask for a motion on this item?
I move to approve only the elected public school director of safety services as a commissioned law enforcement officer in unarmed capacity with a USD 233 Police Department, with the objective to focusing on communication and information sharing. Any deflation from that should be brought before the board for approval.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Boyd, second by Mr. McKeon.
Mr. Beveridge?
Oh, I was going to just give a moment to discuss it. You know what? You don't have any discussion?
Okay, the motion speaks for itself.
All right. Sorry out there. All right, so.
Ready?
Yep, I'm ready.
Mr. Beveridge?
Yes.
Mr. McKeon?
Yes.
Ms. Schultz?
Yes.
Ms. Felter?
Yes.
Mr. Gary?
Yes.
Mr. Wickliff?
Yes.
Mr. Boyd?
Yes.
All right, motion passes. On to 6.02, does anyone have any questions on the bond sale item? If not, can I get a motion?
Move to approve the sale resolution authorizing the district to proceed with the sale of Series 2021A General Obligation School Bonds and Series 2021B Taxable General Obligation Refunding Bonds as presented.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Wickliff, second by, was it Ms. Schultz?
Yes.
All right.
Joy?
Mr. Boyd?
Yes.
Mr. Beveridge?
Yes.
Mr. McKeon?
Yes.
Ms. Schultz?
Yes.
Ms. Felter?
Yes.
Mr. Gary?
Yes.
Mr. Wickliff?
Yes.
All right, and then we have our future action items, 7.01 to 7.08 for the board, and then also written information, the January Head Start Directors Report. And then we are on to topics of discussion for board members. Does any board member have anything they'd like to say?
I do have one thing. I have the chance to visit Central Elementary this past week, and I just want to give a huge shout out to Principal Leggett, her entire team there. Spoke to some teachers, some incredible students, and the thing that struck me the most was that the, the teacher's ability to adapt and problem solve, taking into consideration some of the limitations honestly that, you know, us as a board have placed on them, they were still able to adapt and, and problem solve and, and meet students' needs, so it was good to see that in action.
I appreciate that.
I was going to mention, I, I appreciate the presentation we had tonight, because as several of you know, I tried, last March, I put out to read to all 36 elementary schools last year, and I got through 27 before COVID, so I'm going to be back for those nine, it might be virtually, but that's a month out, but I'll hopefully get there as well, and maybe some of you will do the same, but, so thank you for the presentation tonight on that, it's, it's very important, so.
Brian, I didn't know that was your goal. You've read to 27?
Yeah, we didn't quite get there.
That's amazing.
I know.
I love that.
And you've read, I'll, the book is outstanding. I received the book from the very first one I did, so.
That's great, thank you for doing that.
Yeah, of course.
I love it. Can I?
Yeah, absolutely.
Highlight the Head Start Directors Report? What is amazing to me is in this report, there's summaries of screening requirements that are federally mandated, so screenings have been completed and they total them. For example, hearing screenings, they've done 98% of the kids during the pandemic. I mean, how amazing is that? And then screening requirements completed, I don't know what ASQ stands for, but they've done 95% of those. I mean, during a pandemic, that's a big kudos to Kim Sill and her team, because early learning is where we make the biggest impact, our biggest return on investment, the brain architecture's still being developed, and it, it just jazzes me to see those numbers, so good job.
Thank you. Thank you for highlighting that. Anything else? We'll move on to superintendent comments.
Have a couple this evening. The first is, we were notified last week that the district's been awarded the ASBO International Certificate of Excellence in Financial Reporting Award for 2020. This represents the 14th consecutive year we receive this award, so I'd like to, to thank Cassie Osborne and our business and financial services team for this year's award. And as Mr. Hutchinson's like to brag, his streak is still alive, 14 consecutive years since he got here. And this is an important recognition because it demonstrates our commitment to transparency and high-quality financial reporting. The, the bar that's established by, by ASBO is, is significant, so I, I think that speaks highly for the district that we've done that 14 years in a row. I, I want to do a special thank you to Sherne Morris and Jeanette Tolman, who have been coordinating our vaccine efforts and identifying the staff and getting the messaging out, and helping serve and set up hosting the first of the, the county vaccines, as I said, at, at Olathe Northwest, and, and for the staff there for making this happen. Those I failed to mention, it's, it will probably be a rotating basis around Johnson County, so the next round may be hosted by Blue Valley or Shawnee Mission or, or one of the other school districts, but we, we were the first setting the, the bar high for getting that done, and it just, they've done a, a lot of work over the last week to really get that prepped. And then last is, is we saw our presentation with our librarians in the work that they're doing, that is just a, a piece of the efforts we're trying to do as, as a school system to ensure that our students are exposed to a rich, challenging instruction that honors diverse backgrounds and experiences, not just in the library, but in our, our core content areas and, and those, those opportunities. So always work to be done, but I, I was glad that they were able to present tonight, and you could see a, a part of that focus. And with that, that concludes my comments for this evening.
All right, thank you very much. We're on to our first executive session, if I remember right, did you say 20, 30 minutes for the?
Let's, let's start with 20.
20 minutes, okay. Can I get a motion?
I move, I move that the board adjourned executive session for the purpose of consultation with an attorney to discuss legal issues for the body or agency pursuant to the exception for matters which will be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship under coma, and that the board return to the regular meeting at 8:20 PM in this room. Second.
Motion by Mr. Gary, second by Mr. McKeon?
That's only 10 minutes.
8:30.
Sorry, 8:30, bad math, gosh.
Maybe you could get some math at that elementary school.
Maybe.
He said COVID's live.
I need to go back to work.
Second.
Yeah, second by Mr. McKeon.
I didn't hear it, sorry. Mr. Wickliff?
Yes.
Mr. Boyd?
Yes.
Mr. Beveridge?
Yes.
Mr. McKeon?
Yes.
Ms. Schultz?
Yes.
Ms. Felter?
Yes.
Mr. Gary?
Yes.
Yes.
That the Board adjourned to executive session for the purpose of discussing individual personal performances pursuant to non-elected personnel exception under coma and that the Board returned to the regular meeting at, um, should we say eight forty-five? Is that okay?
Yep.
Eight forty-five?
Second.
Motion by me.
All in favor?
Yes.
Followed post? Are you in post? Okay. That was nice. You're all four at the top of it.
Thank you.
It holds too much.
I know. It takes a dime.
I know.
All right. So I believe we have a motion coming out of executive session, but I'm seeing that...
I'm seeing it here.
Um, so I assume we just...
Hi.
It's simple language to approve the contract, right? Okay. So can I get a motion? Anyone want to take a stab at that?
I move to approve the contract with Dr. Britt Jaeger for superintendent beginning July 2nd, 2021.
Second.
All right. Motion by Mr. Boyd, submitted by Mr. Gary.
Yeah, take a bow.
Probably should.
Yeah. I think Joey was right there.
Yeah.
Mr. Felker?
Yes.
Mr. Gary?
Yes.
Mr. McQuill?
Yes.
Mr. Boye?
Yes.
Mr. Beverly?
Yes.
Mr. McQ?
Yes.
Yes.
All right. And meeting is adjourned. Thank you.